Mr. President, this is town board for Monday, March the 28th, 2016. And we will be asking Commissioner Bonnetz tonight, who is traveling with his family. And so if we could begin our meeting with a moment of silence, as is our captain. Jay Farrell, would you leave some time?
Will everyone rise for please? Let me just say that I am a citizen of the United States of America, and I am a Republican, for which I stand one nation, under God, the individual, and liberty in which I stand all.
We have our agenda before us. There are three items that I would like to add to the agenda. If the board is willing to hear, I think all of them will go under new business. Fred Royal and I were walking through town today and noticed there's someone putting posters for musical venues and for dramas and for all kinds of things on phone poles and other things around town. I'd like to be able to discuss that with the board tonight. Also, several constituents have asked if the board would consider a resolution regarding House Bill Two. And third, the matter of whether an office should be provided for the town board and mayor. Would that suit the board to have those three items just quickly addressed under new business? Michael Fiocco and Beth Wilson-Foley are in agreement. And I understand it requires two members of the town board to place matters on the agenda. Okay, thank you. We have then a modified agenda before you. The consent agenda is first. And is there a motion to accept the agenda for the meeting?
I would like to pull item four and put it, I guess, at the end of new business. And I would like to offer just one clarification to the minutes. Page six, the report, the draft, and that date states that in the review of state, the legislature doesn't pass new legislation, the discussion can stop. If they do it, if they do, it is going to be upon the town and county to establish a district. The legislature has reflected it is upon the town and county to decide to establish a district. There's some clarification in there that I'd like, it's not a, you have not decided someone, I'd like to make that clear.
Is the board in agreement with pulling item number four? And then we will be voting on the consent agenda with the modification to the minutes made by Michael Fiocco. Those in favor, please indicate by standing aye. Those opposed. Thank you. So that proves the minutes, amended, approves the minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting. And I'm sorry, I, there were some dispelling of names on that. I know you didn't type them, Alice Lloyd, but look, on the first page, if they haven't already been approved by the county commissioners, which they may have been in the meantime, but I think we need to get spelling of people names correctly. John Bonnetz and Beth's names were incorrect still. So we are then at the citizens' matters. No one has signed up for public expression time. And so I think we can move to commissioner updates with respect to meetings that we may have attended over the last short while since we were together last. This has been a very light meeting time for me, and so I don't believe I've been to anything. Is there, are there others that have attended meetings of, out of the EDC or the?
Very likely. And I attended Triangle J Council of Government meeting on Wednesday, and it was a great meeting. I brought back some literature for everyone that I wanted to share, all roads reached to and from Triangle J. So basically, it was, it had a very good meeting. We basically talked about interaction with other government. And basically, we're trying to also let everyone know exactly what Triangle J does. And we are planning to meet with the legislature probably in April to discuss certain issues as to what Triangle J can do to help the legislature.
Thank you very much. Are there other updates that need to be given?
I'll just mention the Main Street program and how it works with the downtown vision plan, with the SCPAT. Why, are you attending that meeting?
Yeah, I have responded back.
Under old business then, proceeding to the first item of old business, the drought management plan, water efficiency, and reclaimed water ordinances and policy. Fred Royal, our engineer is here to speak on that.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm going to speak as well as Jennifer Platt, our consultant, who's been helping us out with reclaim water draft, reclaim water policies and ordinances, and water efficiency policies and ordinances. I'm going to take part in the discussion about a draft revised drought management plan. Staff did some research over the past couple of months, and we discovered that there were two documents that the town has either enacted in town code, which is Article Five, which you had last, at the last meeting, which is from 1986. And then there was another document from 2011, which we did some research and could not find that had ever been approved by the Board of Commissioners, but it's just out there. In any case, we looked at the technical and the actual language of those two documents. And in talking with John Potteed and Adam Pickett and others in the town, as well as Jennifer, we came to the conclusion that both of them probably have some areas where we could do some improving on drought management triggers and methods and language, et cetera. So what you have before you is a draft of a proposed revised drought management plan. Just very quickly, the Article Five code goes back to 86, 1986, and it's based on language that we believe came from when we had a THM problem, trihalo methane problem. And so the flow out of the plant was looked at, and it uses a 400,000 gallons a minute type of a language, as well as levels of tanks. And we decided that was not practical or feasible or useful for the town when it comes to triggers to lower use by citizens. And the other one, the one from 2011, used a Hall River staff gauge elevations at the intake. The problem with that is our gauge is inaccurate in a simplified way, as well as the river. We have, we have the luxury of run-of-river water. And we don't have a reservoir that drops down. So we essentially have a river that the flows decrease. But because of the dam, it literally goes to the top of the dam elevation and stays there while it flows over. As you all have seen it during drought, it does flow over the dam because Greensboro does have wastewater treatment plants, and there is some groundwater. So we decided that neither of those triggers would work well for us, especially when we really have to make serious decisions about lowering water use. So I did some research, and I figured out that it might be feasible to use the North Carolina Climatic Office, who gives monthly and weekly updates on drought in North Carolina by the county. And it turns out they have a tool that's in draft form right now, and I'm still working on this with their staff, of utilizing that tool as our trigger. So when Chatham County hits a certain drought condition, we could, we could use that to start our trigger mechanisms. It doesn't have anything to do with the Hall River, or Jordan Lake, or elevations in our tank, because Atom produces five, 600,000 gallons a day, morning, noon, and night, whenever. And it's also more of a way that we're working with the community, the region, to acknowledge we're in a drought condition, because, you know, the river is flowing all the time. And we believe it wouldn't be wise for us to continue our normal operating procedure when everybody else around us is in a drought mode and we're not. So we're, we're trying to look at this regionally, but we're also looking at this in practicality. What can we really do to make this work? So I apologize, I don't have the details of that trigger right tonight with that tool, but I'm looking forward to learning about it and then sharing it with you. Otherwise, the document is about the same as the 2011 document with the types of stages and how we do enforcement, et cetera, et cetera. So we just think this is a, probably a recommended better way to go than using these two other documents that may or may not have ever really been used during drought. That's a fair statement. I'm not sure what, how we hit the triggers before. So that's the one document. So this is a public information session and designed to take questions and comments. So we could either do the drought piece now, which probably is a better method, while you're thinking about it, before we move into the ordinances and policies of documents. So be happy to take questions or comments on that at this point.
Does the board have questions, Fred Royal?
I went looking for the 2011 copy. I couldn't find it. Can you provide a copy?
Yes, it was, I can do it again. I believe it was in your attachment at the last meeting. Yeah, it's on the web. If you still can't find it, just let me know, and I'll send it out as well.
Okay, just a couple of questions. Let's see, page two, in the paragraph dealing with stage two, there's a statement that says outdoor use of drinking water for washing impervious surfaces is prohibited, and all testing and raining purposes require drinking water. There's raining purposes.
I don't know. It's a good question.
And the surcharges on the rates, they are cumulative, such that in stage one, there's the expectation that the 5% reduction from the month's previous bill. Stage two, a 10% reduction from the previous month's bill, assuming it's already been reduced by 5%. And on 20 to 25%, so that by the time you're at stage four, the idea is you're using half as much water as you had been using on a normal day. Does that seem, I mean, does that make sense? Is that a goal that?
Yes, it's cumulative. We could probably change the language to make it more feasible.
I think it works. I don't think there's any way to, I mean, I don't know that there's anything to change. But is a 50% reduction a reasonable expectation for demand? I was a little confused about stage five language. It says firefighting is the only allowable outdoor water use. Well, let me begin, water rationing is to provide drinking water to protect public health. For example, residences, residential health facilities and correctional facilities. So those opposed will still be using water if it's come down to that. Firefighting is the only allowable outdoor water use, and pickup locations for distributing potable water will be announced according to Pittsboro's emergency response plan. Is that trying to tell me that as a residential water user, that you don't get water from a pickup station, and you can't turn it on from the faucet?
I don't know the answer to your question tonight, but we can look into it.
Okay. The only other thing that I've got is there's a reference in here to an emergency response plan, and there's also a reference to a water shortage response plan. Are they different or are they the same?
I would imagine they're the same. Can you direct me to where it says emergency water?
Yeah, on page three, title of the page, Pittsboro's Emergency Response Plan. Same page under item six, public comment, first sentence says water shortage response plan.
Any other questions from the board?
I do have one question. Mr. Royal, if you can recall back when there was the drought situation, where the state was calling it stage one, different people were called what stage one, what it defined as was different, with different counties, different cities across the board. So they had decided at one time that it would be consistent across the board in reference to what stage one would be, stage two, so forth and so on. So is this consistent with what other counties and municipalities would consider stage one, stage two, and so forth and so on?
I can't answer that tonight. Jennifer might have more information, but if not, we'll get back to you on that question.
All right, that's good, thank you.
If there are any other questions, then let us hear from Jennifer Platt.
Yeah, what I can say about that is that we've been working with the Triangle J Council of Government, so that at least there's regional consistency. So it may not be the whole state, but at least all the municipalities in this area would be on the same page. And that timing should be dovetail right in with what we're doing.
Can I ask a question? If the 2011 information was based upon a pool elevation in Hall River, which obviously has some correlation between the amount of water that's there and available for town use, and those were the triggers that led to that pool, and we don't really know what these other triggers are that you want incorporated into the new policy? How does that relate to the water available for Pittsboro? Pool elevation is easy to determine if, as soon as you measure it. These triggers that come from the state, what are they going to have to do with the town water supply?
Well, the state will be based on the regional rainfall data, and then they come up with, they have a model, and it comes up with what's considered, you know, moderate drought, severe drought, based on rainfall data and groundwater elevation. So, but the Hall River, as you know, is basically, you know, it flows out of Greensboro, Burlington, from wastewater treatment plants during a drought. It's probably 80% wastewater water during a severe drought. So, but it doesn't, it doesn't drop to levels that really reflect a drought, per se, because it's not a reservoir. It continues to flow to the lip of the dam elevation and pretty much just stays right there. It would take, you know, it would take folks stopping flushing their toilets in Greensboro for the, for the river level to go below the lip of the dam elevation, if you follow me.
But if the trigger is based on county data, then Siler City's going to be subject to the same levels as Pittsboro, and even though their water source is completely different than ours. Right?
So county data?
I thought you said earlier it was based on the county.
Oh, it'd be based on regional data that the state climate office develops, based on, you know, the Piedmont. I don't know exactly how their model works, so I can't exactly tell you what's going on in the model. But they, they do have county by county triggers in this tool. They'll say Chatham County is at this, you know, Lee County is at that, Orange County.
So it may or may not have any correlation to the availability of water for Pittsboro?
Correct.
But we're going to restrict usage of water by citizens in the town?
We could.
Well, if we adopt this, we are.
Okay, so what I said earlier was, if we want to go this route, it's, it also is a way to kind of work with the COG, with this regional approach that, you know, if Burlington is suffering and Siler City's suffering, then we'll suffer too. That's the idea. But we don't have to go down that road.
But it could affect businesses, like, you know, car washes and other?
It could, absolutely.
So just because we're going to share their pain means we may affect the economy?
We may be sharing their pain, yeah.
Okay, as long as they understand that.
All right.
I think Mr. Ressi did bring that up. As a business owner, then, how is that going to affect our business? Would business have to buy all the water?
Well, the way it currently works is you would if you got down to stage four or so, the way, the way the law is today. So, well, actually, if you read the code exact, to its exact language, we'd never get to that stage, because Atom never produces less than 400,000 gallons per day. So we would, we would in effect, never be in a restricted mode, is my interpretation. So we'd just be going along our business like usual. So, but we can, we'll look into all these questions and get back with you with your answers, and we can have further discussion.
The 2011 data talks about pool elevation, it doesn't talk about production.
Correct. It's all about pool elevation.
So whether he can produce or not is irrelevant to this table?
Correct. It's just, and staff gauge elevation is a way a lot of people go. But that's because they have reservoirs. Like, I've never seen a staff gauge elevation triggered in a river. But I can do some research to make sure it does not.
Okay.
Great comments.
I just want to clarify, like, several years ago, when we had a drought, Siler City was in serious situations with their reservoir. So with the regional aspect of, if Siler City's having a hard time, do we also, even though we're not lucky to have the same kind of problem as Siler City, does that, do we have to have the same situation as Siler City as far as to the description?
If anyone can tell me what the town did, what the trigger was when Siler City was trucking water from Jordan Lake, I don't know what Pittsboro was doing, if anything.
That's our job, we were dealing with running water north.
Yeah, I was good. We didn't have any problems with doing that assignment, from what I can recall. We didn't have any problems.
Okay, that's because we had run-of-river water. We had a luxury. So the question is?
We have an asset.
We have an asset. The question is, what do we want to do about it during a severe drought? That's really, that's the bottom line of this whole question. And we can put a really nice staff gauge down in the river, because Atom doesn't have a super nice one right now. And we can calibrate it, we'll know exactly where that water's at, and we can come up with triggers if that's the preference of the board.
Might be a good time to sell water, wouldn't it?
Atom can just back them up.
I'd mind it.
So if that's it, I'll turn this over to Jennifer for the two other items, because we're moving on.
Hi, good evening, thank you. So we'll move on to the reclaimed water ordinance. And as you all know, the town has one large reclaimed water customer right now, that is 3M. And we are proposing this ordinance to, just to lay out the town's intent and commitment to having a consolidated approach to using reclaimed water. We certainly want to increase our distribution as well as our sales of reclaimed water. And this ordinance outlines our intents, which are, of course, to be efficient with natural resources, but also to, along with that, extend our reclaimed water system where it seems practical and feasible, where it makes sense. And, and the other key part of the intent in this ordinance is that anybody who's using irrigation water usage in the reclaimed water service areas would be required to tap into the reclaimed water system. The other requirements of the ordinance are just pretty much your standard requirements with customer requirements, applications permitting, how we deal with cross-connection extensions and emergencies. So I know that's short and sweet, but it is, you know, it's pretty much a straightforward proposal. And what we envision over time is that as we experience the growing area of town, we will have feasibility studies where we'll map out where the reclaimed water service areas will be, and then, you know, start bringing in customers in those service areas.
Does the board have questions, Jennifer Platt? I'd like to know, Jen, for how this meshes with Chadon Park's plan for reuse water. Does this take into account that very thing, or is it, or did, which came first, you can go ahead?
But I would say this, this dovetails right in with the plans for Chadon Park to use a lot of reclaimed water as much, we want to encourage as much use as possible in Chadon Park. And it's my understanding that they're even going to be dual plumbing some of their commercial buildings, so that they'll be able to use reclaimed water for toilets. So yes, it is a great opportunity for us.
I'll just add to that. So the feasibility idea is, we would, we would have to do a little modeling, hydraulic modeling, to see where, from the wastewater plant, pressures and flows are adequate in town for irrigation heads to pop open, as an example. Or to just deliver enough pressure to, say, a building that has a cooling system, or just some required reclaimed water. So we're not proposing to come up with a service area right off the bat. We would have to first get the approval of the process, and then we would go into modeling it at that point, to figure out where these possible service areas are located in Pittsboro. And that's based on our existing pumps and everything Randy's got at the wastewater plant. The other piece we haven't mentioned here is the bulk reclaim station concept, which would allow tanker trucks to pull in, swipe a car, fill up, and off they go. And there's a process for having all that done. But that, that's the general thinking at this point.
So Fred, the feasibility study that you mentioned, that sounds, starting to sound to me like in-house work, whereas when I'm reading it, I'm thinking, okay, are we talking about getting that in budget cycle this year? Do we have a cost estimate? Do we have new ideas? Is it in-house, or do you think we're?
We, we have to hire a consultant to do the water model, the sewer model. It'd be minor, it wouldn't be a big ticket item. So that would have to happen, whether we do it next fiscal year or the following fiscal years, we could decide. I don't imagine it would be very expensive, though.
I do have some thoughts and comments on the document. As I was reading it, I wanted a definite definition of irrigation system. I don't think that I have an irrigation system at my home, because I plug my hose up to the faucet, and water the yard. I don't think that's an irrigation system. I'm wondering if this document thinks that's an irrigation system. I can certainly see problems trying to plug that through my home. Can we also define the director?
Define what?
Director, the person who's making a lot of decisions here.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. This is definitely a rough draft. This is definitely a rough draft. For your feedback, and we also will work with Mr. Messeck as well.
You have mentioned that the folks who are going to use an irrigation system, if the system is available to them along the frontage of their property, that I heard you use the word "they'll have to tap on." So during construction of this line, it sounds to me like we're not the town who's going to construct the system. It's not actually stubbing the line over to the property so that they can tap on, they actually have to go back to the main and tap on? Is that what we're saying?
Unless it's new construction.
So if it's, well, isn't it all going to be new construction? The, all of this, all of this reclaimed water line?
Yeah, that'll be new.
That'll all be new?
And it'll be rest up there for the existing building or new construction. So yeah, I think what happens is happening. It'd be like a water tank.
Yeah, but I'm asking the question, when that water line goes down the road, and there's properties on both sides, that line is not going to actually make that essential? It's going to say, within 90 days of this being there, you homeowner need to cut up the road again and get access to that pipe?
If they want irrigation, they have to use that line.
Okay.
If the line is there.
Okay.
Not within 90 days or anything like that. So if they come and say, I want an irrigation system and an irrigation meter, and we have a line there, then yes, they'd have to tap it.
So you might extend a huge system if no users?
Well, the model that Cary used, spent a lot of money extending a system out, and then they slowly, Jennifer's experienced with this and how Cary dealt with it, but I don't believe we would extend a line unless we knew we had users. Especially if it's a, ideally, we'd have a large user.
So if we knew we had users, then we would stub the line over for them as a construction?
Yeah, if we knew, yeah.
So at your occasion, not a part of going to the house or in the outfit, is this separate?
I've heard. They're running a couple of pipes everywhere, and they're not necessarily stubbing, well, they haven't done any residential yet, so I can't say for sure, but how that's going to go, but.
We do require our irrigation systems to be separately metered in town right now, so requiring the customer to tap into the reclaimed water line, we can get dollars if you'd like to know approximate current estimates of costs, but the other thing is that their reclaimed water likely is going to cost less. So, you know, so they'll eventually recoup the cost of stubbing into the town's system.
I think that a lot of people do not want to make a capital expenditure with the idea that I'll get my return in tenures for water usage. And if we're trying to encourage water reuse, because of many aspects associated with it, maybe we would do what we can in the first place. So there were several places in here where it talked about the water not being available for these things called temporary exemptions, and/or the town may decide not to provide the water for legitimate reasons. And at that point, can the homeowners or the business owners convert their irrigation system to a potable system?
This would, what we had in mind here is that it would be a temporary service discontinuation. So, yeah, so if you want us to address that in there, we can.
Well, there was that temporary pollution, but there was also another section that talked about, I think it's section 10, that talks about not providing the service, not providing the water in the system. Section six had a statement that was confusing to me. And it says that insofar as there is not conflict with provisions of this article, now policies and procedures pertaining to potable water service should apply. I didn't understand potable water supply regulations applying to the reuse, so I didn't know that. Section six.
Yeah, I think, you know, what we have in mind there is just things that are generalities that would apply to a utility system in general for preventions or applications, but we can be more specific in there.
Like reading leaders, you know, that process with billing, how that stuff.
There was a reference in item 8C to a section 36 dash 4. I did not know where to go looking for that information.
Yeah, that's a wrong reference. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Jennifer, may I ask if, going back to your conversation with Michael Fioke, required tap-ons for these irrigation systems, will this require a pressure reduction valve? If PIBs should be?
Not for this line.
So this line's not under as much pressure as potable water lines are?
No.
Okay. I was just thinking about our recent conversation about the VFW HUD and their need to get a pressure reduction valve, the cost of which is $1,200, which really surprised me. I mean, that seemed like a, well, I have no idea how much a pressure reduction valve costs, but I'm learning. Anything else from the board?
I have, it's not really clear on whether it requires irrigation uses in reclaimed service area to connect the system. What are you going to define? Are you going to define the reclaimed service area?
Yes.
And then, okay.
It requires that feasibility study. Figure out where that service area can be with our existing system. So it's a, that's a couple of steps away, the service area.
I think one of the steps is conceivably set a public hearing date, feel as though you're ready for a public hearing.
No, we come back, we come back with some more language modifications, answer questions. Jennifer reminded me that we had talked about going to the planning board after you all are happy with it, to, or the other way around. To make sure the planning board sees this, asks questions. That's the plan.
So I just have a question as far as section 7A talks about extending reclaimed water service, establishing a priority. Is that something that will be done at the time of the approval of ordinance?
I'd add B with the ordinance, prior to priorities.
Other questions for Jennifer Platt? Thank you very much, Jennifer.
Okay, let's move on to the water efficiency ordinance. This is a brand-new type of ordinance that we're proposing for the town. A water efficiency ordinance would offer us an opportunity to embed water-efficient fixtures into, it can be both new development, it can be existing development, there's all different kinds of ways a water efficiency program can work. For the town, we have several different key intents behind proposing a water efficiency ordinance, and that is not only to protect our water resources, but it would also help us reduce our wastewater discharges, as you know, we're limited by the state, as well as reducing damage to our publicly-owned streets and sidewalks that is caused by runoff of water, and that would help also with increasing safety. So if you have water runoff that's happening, for example, from an irrigation system and it freezes, then that's a hazard. So, and then the last intent is preventing pollution by reducing our runoff. We're very lucky that about 10 years ago, the Environmental Protection Agency started a program called Water Sense. And if you're probably familiar with the Energy Star rating, when you go to buy an appliance now, you see this rating on the side of the appliance that tells you how energy efficient it is, and how much money you're going to save because you bought this energy efficient appliance. Well, in that same vein, EPA started a Water Sense program about 10 years ago, and it has been wildly popular. There's thousands of organizations that have become partners in the program, ranging from utilities to municipalities to product manufacturers to retailers, and it's really been a very successful program. There are a lot of ways to use the Water Sense standards. It can be a voluntary program, it can be a certification program, like a green building program, or it can be an ordinance. And what we are proposing here is that we could use the EPA's Water Sense standards for, in the foundation of an ordinance. Just to tell you one more thing real quickly, we've got, there are several other municipalities and states of the country that are doing this, and we wouldn't be the front runners of such an approach. Miami-Dade is doing it, Atlanta, states of Colorado, Texas, Arizona, oh, sorry, not Arizona, New Mexico, and California. So it is an approach, it's not a brand-new approach. What the EPA knows, that to date, they've saved over a trillion gallons of water through the Water Sense standards. It's also saved 146 billion kilowatt-hours of electricity and 54 million metric tons of carbon dioxide, as well as $27 billion in water and electric bills. So what a lot of people don't realize is when you're more efficient with your water use, you're saving energy use as well on reduced water, hot water demand, processing costs from the water plant, et cetera. So what we have outlined in our water efficiency ordinance is that it would be a way to have the standards for both new construction for residential customers as well as commercial customers in outdoor water use. So that's the first part of the ordinance, and then the second part of the ordinance is, ties it all together by prohibiting overall water waste, and that's running irrigation systems so long that you have nice little ponds in the street, or having leaks that aren't addressed that go unaddressed for a long, long time. Another key opportunity of an ordinance is that it's an education tool. So you use it to educate people that don't know about, oh, I shouldn't be running my irrigation system so long. No, it's not a good thing to water the streets and not my line, but you can point to the ordinance.
Should we have a copy of your draft? Because I think all of us up here have been looking through our packages, but we don't have that.
Oh, no.
Okay, well, can you send it to us? That'd be great.
I mean, can we, I have a copy here that we can make copies and distribute.
Can you give it to me?
Do you want to get a copy right now?
I think we have other business, why don't we just move on with that?
Okay.
We'll get it then by email.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. It's still, it's very-
I should drive it.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, yes. When you were talking about the EPA awards this standards, are you providing a copy of what those standards are so we'll know?
Yes, ma'am. They're in the draft ordinance.
I apologize, you didn't get them.
Okay. I could've sworn I downloaded them off the site.
All right. Thank you very much.
Do you want to wrap this up real quickly? I know you've heard a lot about water tonight, thank you.
So one more, just, this is more of an ongoing discussion, just to remind you of what else we're doing with water. We are trying to figure out better ways to reduce our water, non-revenue water. Adam cranks out a lot of water, and the last time that we did a water audit, we estimated about a core of a million dollars a year in town costs, just on not, no sales, it just disappears, is not sold. That's a rough number, because as Adam mentioned in his budget request, he doesn't even have a very accurate way to know exactly how much water he distributes to the town with the type of meters he has, but that's just another story. So non-revenue water loss reduction is a, that's huge on my personal plate, and I'm trying to talk to John Patid about ways we can do that, we can better address that, you know. Changing out old water pipes is the first and easiest way to kind of go about that business, but also knowing with how much we're making versus how much we're selling. So that's one piece. Interconnections with Chatham County, we've begun working with them. We're going to receive proposals to do modeling and look at feasibility on the four or five different connection points that are out there that are possible. Some are on the south side of town, west side of town, north side of town. That's ongoing, and we'll bring that to you as soon as we have more information. The water audits, I believe, we should try to get our handle on that a little bit more. That goes back to what I mentioned with what Adam has at the plant, and we have new software for water billing, so that helps us know more accurately how much water we sell every month. And we can do data analysis with that, with those, with that data, those data. And the last one's an asset management plan for water distribution and upgrade, and similar to what we're looking at doing with sewer, we'd like to do that with water. So we have an inventory of all of our water assets, and we begin to know what replacement needs we have, what priority that's in, what's it going to cost, and so we can program it out through the years. Anyway, I'll stop now, thank you.
Fred, I'm going to ask you, a couple months ago, do we meter off our flush, hydrant flush?
We do.
Okay.
And that's relatively new. We didn't used to know how much we flushed. And I believe Daryl meters it as well. I'm not 100% sure on that, but I know that the town does. When we do our water quality flushing, we definitely do.
I believe we're supposed to start hydrant testing next month, somebody?
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, Daryl is?
Yeah. I don't know if he uses a meter, but we have meters.
I'll pass that on.
Thank you. All right. The next item under old business is hearing from Adam Pickett regarding the water plant and 140xine, and welcome.
Welcome. Good evening. Just want to provide a quick update of the 140xine that's been found throughout the Cape Fear River Basin. It's ongoing research, figure out where this is coming from. It sounds like several cities are joining together, trying to find the problems. Some of the things that I do know is it's now been located at the Rendelman Regional Reservoir, and that's the Piedmont Tribe Regional Water Authority, who is over that, and it's owned jointly by Greensboro, High Point, Artville, Jamestown, Rendelman, and Randolph County. Randolph County. Greg Fleury, who is the Regional Water Authority Executive Director, stated the authority regularly finds 14 dioxin in their water supply. They are waiting to see if EPA declares the chemical compound a health threat, and if so, what safety limits the agency sets. Steve Drew from Greensboro, Director of Water Resources, stated his department has been testing various parts of the city's underground sewer system to help identify hot spots that could suggest who or what is behind the dioxin discharges, but they have no conclusions yet. So I spoke to Dr. Knappi at NC State. His latest, he's been speaking with Mike Nolan from Fayetteville Public Works Commission. Mike Nolan spoke with the state's permitting branch. They are actively working with the cities involved to identify the industries that are discharging the dioxin. He also spoke to Greensboro to verify, they're actively pursuing load reduction with industries that have been identified as being sources. So then I spoke with Tiffany Hawley at Department of Water Quality. She's an environmental engineer with them for this region. And she didn't have any additional information, only that the EPA completed the monitoring in the UCMR-3, and they are reviewing that data, but no update on about a possible regulation yet. Then I spoke with Julie Gerstie, who's an engineer with NC Department of Environmental Law, and she is in the permitting department. And she said that the Reddsville Wastewater Treatment Plant, the TZ Osborne Wastewater Treatment Plant in Greensboro, and the Ashboro Wastewater Treatment Plant are the three plants that are contributing to our problems in our highest concentrations. And she said that this year, they're up for permanent renewal on their MPDES permit, and the 14 dioxin will be on the permit. So that's good news. I feel like we are making progress in this, and it's looking like they're going to try to regulate it on the wastewater discharge side, which will, of course, fix our problems. So anyway, I know that's kind of short, but that's what I have at the present. Do you have any questions?
So by putting it on the permit, that means they're going to monitor, they're going to state an allowable discharge and monitor it?
If it's on the permit, it will be regulated. There's a regulation, and if they exceed that, what's on the permit, it will be a violation, and they will be fined. And, you know, she even stated that there could be some industrial users upstream that could potentially be shut down if this continues on, so.
But right now, it's not on the permit, so it's not regulated?
Right now, no, but she is sure that it will be this year.
Are there other places, maybe in North Carolina or in the region, where discharge limits are established? So they'll be scouting this for the first time?
Exactly. There are no regulations.
So, if I could, so those wastewater treatment plants, after it's on the permit and it is regulated, then those wastewater treatment plants upstream from us, would then in theory be treating for 14 dioxin before it reaches the Hall River and reaches anywhere?
Absolutely. They would be, they would have to implement a treatment technique to either remove it or find the sources that it's coming from and show it off at the source. And either one of those would be yes before it hit the Hall River.
Would the, Adam, would it be regulated with this, or would we have to have any kind of improvements to the plant?
Well, it looks like the approach that the state is looking at, no. Because if they, it's, you know, it shouldn't be in the water in the first place, and if they cut off the sources of the discharge, then, yeah, I mean, drinking water shouldn't have moved. At the present, that's the way it sounded anyway.
Are they looking any further up than Greensboro, or are they looking up that way any further?
If they are, I hadn't heard of that, because it's just been so much talk just in the Cape Fear River Basin. I mean, this chemical's been found throughout the United States in different concentrations. And it's just, you know, hits home though when it's in the Cape Fear River Basin, it's in the Hall River and the Deep River, it's been found in Pittsburgh, Harnett County, Sanford, I mean, it, all the way down to Wilmington, I mean, it has been in higher And a lot of that stemming from the wastewater treatment plants that I just mentioned. And that's why they're going to actively pursue updating their permit.
When is our permit up for renewal?
I don't know. That's Randy, it would be his permit that fills the discharge. We have a discharge, but it's just process water that we do, so it's pretty much just put river waters back in the river.
Sorry.
We just updated, we just sent in our new permit application. It's a five-year cycle. We just sent it in, so.
And there won't be any regulation of 14 dioxin from our state?
Not from our water.
I don't know. It was more than likely it's coming from some large industrial users, because it's more than likely where it's coming from, and then it gets discharged to the wastewater treatment plant. Of course, they use conventional treatment, they can't remove it, passed on downstream to us and whoever, they use conventional treatment, they can't remove it. So it's either find a source, limit it, or find a treatment technique, and then it's in place.
Did you have that one? That's what I wanted to ask about. So they are planning, trying to put a way to treat it in place now, because they don't know where it's coming from, or are they working on doing that?
She didn't specify which approach they was going to, because they've got to get it on the permit first, and then see what their levels are. And of course, more than likely, this is where they're going to be exceeding the levels, and what approach they take at that point, I don't know yet.
So is activated charcoal the thing that is being looked at as a cure for?
No, actually, I've heard of it. The only real way to remove this is through advanced oxidation with a high solution hydrogen peroxide and ozone or UV disinfection. And it's a very advanced treatment technique that's really moving the scene, so a lot of the engineering firms you talk to don't know what to tell you.
And really expensive.
Exactly.
Well, and one of the reasons we wanted to have you speak to us tonight is that Wilson Foley and I are going to be meeting with town administrations upstream, and it sounds like that Greensboro, we had heard, was the most cooperative with respect to trying to track down the sources of this. But Reddsville is what we had heard was, was still very reticent to, and we thought we could reach out to some of these upstream dischargers and see what we can do from a political standpoint.
Sure.
Could we have a copy of your notes emailed to us so that we could get those names of those people at the state level?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any documentation that would help us?
Yeah, sure. And there's been some write-ups in the paper, like I said, the latest one was the news of record in Greensboro, I believe. But I will email you my notes here, and, I mean, they're going to be rough, but you can at least get the names of what you need.
And if you have links to those articles, that would be great, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coming on to New Business, Jeff Jones is going to present the site plan for people out there.
Thank you, Mayor. I may present the board. We do have a site plan, our first one for the 2016 season. It's SP 2016-01 for Pittsburgh Outdoor Equipment. It's generally located along Pittsburgh Amity Road, it's the parcel that's outlined in red. The zoning on this parcel is in two, which is heavy industrial. Current land use for the parcel is residential in nature, which if we remember back to the rezoning that we had a few months ago, one of the items coming out of that rezoning period was for staff to identify areas that have residentially zoned land uses that are not current. They're being used for not what they're zoned for, and this actually will clear up one of those parcels out there, because as I understand it from the applicant, that once the building is built and occupied, that the home that's in the rear will then revert to an office storage facility for Pittsburgh Amity, or for Pittsburgh Outdoor Equipment. This is the site plan. It's 6,000 square foot, commercial, one-story commercial building with nine parking spaces. The parking spaces, according to the ordinance, do not trigger any type of paving, because we require anything over 10 spaces to be paved, so this would be nine spaces. This lot is small enough that we do not have to, that the stormwater regulations do not trigger any type of town or county stormwater review. And at the planning board meeting earlier in the month, there was a couple of questions that the planning board had, that the staff had shared, had had as well through the review process, and the applicant can kind of address those tonight, but a couple of the questions that the planning board had was regarding deliveries to the building, house deliveries going to occur, will that block parking spaces, and transfer trucks being able to maneuver the site. Site lighting, is there going to be additional site lighting outside of what's currently there? And then one that was discussed a little bit was outdoor storage and door display. And as I understand it, that the applicant is not proposing any outdoor storage or display, at least not in the front of the area. There may be some storage towards the rear of equipment that is being worked on, but the applicant could address that during his presentation. Planning board voted unanimously 6-0 to recommend approval. The staff have recommended approval as well. And the subject to additional local state permits is really a DOT driveway permit, which I believe the applicant has obtained. So the applicant is here, and his engineer is here as well. We can try to answer any questions that the board may have. I'll just, oh, this is the look of the building. You'll see roll-up doors on two sides of the building, the front door. And this, well, doesn't, the second elevation is the front of the front door that will face Pittsburgh Amity Road. And then you have two sides, and then the rear is the roll-up doors. Answer any questions on that? We're back.
Is there a question?
Now, we had a little comment, and that was, remember, in the planning board meeting, that deliveries would be by semi-trailer, and the driveway just was kind of tight. So.
I hope that that is being taken into consideration by the applicant, and, because I have the same.
So would the board like to hear from the developer, Jeremiah Development LLC?
Hi, how are you all? I'm Jason Jeremiah. Trying to expand my business. I've worked in this town since I was 15 years old. I've been self-employed for 10 years and get to the next level. I'm planning on, you know, expanding my business. I take pride in growing my business, supporting my family, and, you know, earning a living in this town. And with this, we'll be able to, you know, expand, get more equipment. And through our shop, we'll be able to hire two more full-time employees, you know, and hopefully a few more. So that's the goal behind this, is to expand and support our family.
How many employees do you have now?
We have four full-time employees and three part-time employees. Hopefully, with nicer facilities, we're able to attract, you know, the top-of-the-line people and, you know, and attract some good quality employees. I have some great ones now, and hopefully to keep expanding.
So what kind of equipment will it be prepared?
We sell and service landscaping equipment, zero-turn mowers, weed eaters, chainsaws, and that's what we work on.
And all of that will be on the inside of the building? Are you going to have all of these? Those items that you're repairing will be on the inside all the work we have to come by?
All the work will be done on the inside. We'll have a repair shop, and we have a showroom in the front to display all our new lawnmowers and equipment.
But did the planning board decide about outdoor display of your equipment? I don't remember hearing that discussed.
All the new equipment's going to be inside in the display. It's going to be about 2,000 square foot of display area, and then I ask customers to drop off equipment. You know, we'll temporarily be outside, and hopefully with the much larger shop, we'll be able to get stuff in and out pretty quick.
Unless all the repair shop, you have to do cars for, something?
Yeah.
Jason, Commissioner Yerkes says something about the drive. Do you think that's going to be any problem getting trucks in there for deliveries?
I don't think so. You know, the area I'm in now is, can be pretty tight, and those truck drivers are pretty good about getting in and getting out. You know, most of our deliveries are UPS and FedEx deliveries, and in seasonal times, we get a lot, you know, we might get a truck of lawnmowers in, and we might not get another truck for, in three or four weeks or so. It's very seasonal. But most of our deliveries are UPS and FedEx, site deliveries.
Put the other site plan up there, real quickly. That might help believe that some of this talk about, there's a circle, the driveway goes all the way around the whole building, so, I mean, they can come in and make their delivery, and then keep on going around a circle, then go on back out.
That's right. The goal is to come in and unload in the rear and...
Upcoming and welcome gentleman up in the business here in town.
Where are you located now?
On 203 South Small Street. I share a business with the Southern State, well, Country Department of Supply.
Yeah.
I've been there for 11 years.
Yeah, this has been a very nice addition since you've been here.
I'm trying, you know, I enjoy helping the people in this community, I've grown up here, and, you know, and again, it's nice to make a living here.
Well, if you are anything like the reputation that Mr. Brooks had, and I understand he's no longer doing it, so perhaps that will increase your business.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion made by Michael Fierko, seconded by Colonel Walton, to approve the site plan for Jeremiah Development's Pittsburgh Outdoor Equipment. If there are any further discussions. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Moving then on to, Michael Fierko had asked that the item number four from the consent agenda would be moved over to New Business, so maybe take a look at that. This is from Cape Fear Regional Hazard Medication Plan.
Yeah, the reason I pulled it is I wanted to know, did the town contribute in any way? Did it participate in this plan? I think there's a request for this board to approve it, or I think we're looking to pass it, and just wanted to know, did we contribute? Because I appreciate the idea of saving the paper, but I certainly could not read it. So did not read it, and we'd like to know if I should read it.
Well, as I indicated in my memo, it's also, the full copies are also online, I think. You can, I copied off, just, and you are correct, it's a little bit, it's a little bit small, I think, pages, I combined them on hard copies, the full copies are... The full copies are, I had a portion of our, um, packages.
Well, I certainly, if I could, you know, I'd appreciate.
About a thousand pages.
Uh, I think the whole plan is actually fourteen hundred plus pages.
So I copied, I copied the counties, just, okay, there, there are two, two items, if I could start back, maybe at the beginning. Aside from the resolution and the statement of approval for resolution for the Cape Fear Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, the statement of approval, um, for the Chatham Emergency Operations Plan is a sec, is a separate piece that I'll, I'll get to in a second. The Cape Fear Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan is about a fourteen hundred page document. I copied off the Chatham County, um, portion of the document, which I think is a little bit, a little bit less than a hundred pages. Now, the reason why the document itself is so large is because this time around, um, this year, FEMA, um, the, well, the, there was a multi-county submission, I guess, to FEMA. It included Chatham, Lee, Hartnett, Johnson, and Moore Counties. And so, um, so the Chatham, each, each one of those counties kind of go at or approach, um, their, the overview of possible emergencies and how they would handle them in much the same way, but they talked about maybe the intricacies, there's, you know, geography or population or industries that are involved with each one of the counties. And so, there are some, there are some nuances within each county, but the approaches are essentially the same. Um, the, um, the Chatham County portion is the, the portion that I included in your packet and, um, and, and yeah, I agree it is small. If, um, there's a couple of ways we can go about this. We could, we could print off, I guess we could print off six copies, uh, if that is your, if that is your desire, but again, that's, if you, if you want the full, full copy or the full, full edition of each, uh, of each plan, then, then, uh, that's what it would take. The second, the second option, I guess, would be, uh, if you wanted to take another meeting and review what we have online, uh, if that would be helpful. Um, that serves me a possibility, uh, as well. Uh, to answer your question, yeah, I did attend, I, I did attend one meeting. I, I think my name shows up in here somewhere, the Cape Fear, uh, in the Cape Fear piece in particular, um, just as an overview of the project and, and the background, and I think, uh, the chief and I did extend, did, did attend one other session, um, on a, I believe it was a modeling, it was a modeling session around a possible emergency that was in theory, uh, involving, uh, the Sharon Harris County Power Plant. And so we did have, we did have some participation and contribution with the, uh, and have, I guess, a little bit of knowledge on how it was, on how it was, uh, how it was put together and, and I think we almost know enough to be dangerous and how it would actually operate. The second piece is the Emergency Operation Plan, and it's a little more basic, but again, it's, it's pretty lengthy and, uh, and, uh, I, I opted to, to combine the hard copy, combine pages on that hard copy as well. And this, uh, the Emergency Operation Plan, EOP as it's called, uh, is something that is, is more localized to the county and how the county would interact with the jurisdictions, um, each jurisdiction, each town within the county. And, um, if you can read it, there are, there are different scenarios and basically how, uh, how each, um, how the county would, would, would respond to each situation and where applicable, referring to, you know, local, uh, local authorities and local coordinations. So, um, the, um, there's also a checklist in the, in, uh, the final piece and, um, that, uh, you know, the same, same thing, different, different situations within the first scope of the EOP, um, not the regional Cape Fear piece, but within the EOP, then identifying a particular, uh, possible, um, need for response and then basically identify how the county would respond to each one of those, uh, incidents and how it would coordinate with the locals as, as necessary. And so, if, if you do feel like, and maybe it sounds like you're not, but if it does, if it does feel like that, that you're comfortable with, with the work that's gone into it, uh, at this point, uh, the, uh, the, uh, our Emergency Operations Center is asking that we, um, each municipality essentially review and, uh, approve each one of these plans, each one being, the first one being the Cape Fear Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, the second being, uh, the County Emergency Operations Plan at the EOP. So, you know, I, I completely understand. If you want to take another meeting, I can, I can direct you to where this information is. All hundreds and thousands of pages of this information is online. We can certainly link it to that. But I thought, I thought I would, I thought I would at least make an attempt to provide hard copy as best I, as I could without, without using up all of our paper.
Um, how about just the Chatham County EOP?
About two or three hundred pages. Yeah, and if I may, Commissioner, and I, I could be wrong, but I think this is a revision. I think they have to do this every five years. So I don't know, obviously, since I wasn't here five years ago, what our involvement was and the, if that was the original plan or if that was a revision five years ago. Uh, but a lot of these are just standard protocols of the emergency action plans. A lot of this is federal guidelines, emergency response plans. I haven't read through the whole two hundred and twenty something pages, I think it is, of Chatham's, but what I have read through is kind of standard operational stuff through my law enforcement, fire experience. But, uh, you know, whatever you ask us to do, we'll, we'll look into it.
And as I indicated my memo, guys, it's, it's updated every five years.
Yeah, so it's not a new plan, it's like a revised plan. I'm sure there's been different protocols added.
The appro, the approach, at least in terms of the regional plan, was more.
I recall the Chatham County one from years ago. Yeah, it was a hefty plan. Um, you know, I just want to make sure that we understand what our obligations are, what our commitments are in this plan.
Yeah, and.
And obviously, you guys are going to be leading that charge, so.
Yeah, and.
If your recommendation is that you're, you understand this and comfortable with it.
And we can go through, for example, I did go through the law enforcement protocol for the obvious reasons, and there was nothing there gave me cause for concern or headache. It's pretty generic and establishes that, like, what established when I read the law enforcement was that the sheriff's office would be the lead agency coordinating an incident in Chatham County, but it still came under the jurisdiction of the senior officer in the jurisdiction happened. So if it was an incident in Pittsburgh, I or my designated would be in charge. Sheriff's Office is the one that coordinates, helps, and then through the Emergency Operations Center, vice versa with Silas City or whatever like that. So it's, it's, you know, based on all my experiences and training, when I read that protocol, it didn't give me cause for concern or represent the town's interest. Uh, so, and I'm, I'm assuming the rest of that plan would be a vehicle like that, but we'll be happy to, you know, talk with Daryl, the Fire Department, and, and I actually have something else I'm doing with the Emergency Operations Center tomorrow. I could, I can ask some questions tomorrow, too.
But I, I know that during an emergency, it's a bad time to figure it out. And I know during, when it's an emergency, it's not a bad time to start figuring it out.
Yeah.
And I do know that, you know, during the courthouse fire, it was a, that was a tough situation.
Yeah.
It was a chaotic situation, uh, in many degrees. In many ways, it was, was handled very well. Um, but I do know that there was a lot of stress there.
Yeah, and they've got some good, I, I mean, I looked through the index and I've skimmed over some of, they've got good, like, major power outage protocols, major fire protocols, terrorist incident protocols, uh, so, and the biggest thing is getting this information out to our personnel that need it and having it ready when we do have to respond to these things.
I think that when, when the emergency is declared, however the emergency is declared, but when the emergency is declared, the, the, the base of operations, unless there's a mobile base of operations and something's localized, um, pretty much, pretty much Percy or possibly myself or possibly even Mayor Car, Mayor, Mayor Carey would head directly to the Emergency Operations Center over at the county campus. Um, at that, they have, they have an entire room that's basically set up to do nothing but handle emergencies. You're, you're, you have a place to sit, you, you, uh, you have a telephone, possibly a computer, they have a wall bank of computers. We receive, because the county is, is chief indicates that the county coordinates, the county would essentially provide instructions for, for us as appropriate, and then we would provide that information most likely to you. We can, depending on the emergency, but, but, uh, I mean, it's, uh, I, that, the nuclear emergency, which, you know, without getting into the, the details of that, I think gave me a pretty good, at least initial playbook. And I was, I was trying to gain and, and figure how other, you know, types of emergencies would work, um, you know, if you had a tornado or hurricane. We're essentially kind of going through the same sort of procedures that, we're, we're recording the Emergency Operations side, the county's doing the coordination because they're in a position to do so, and then we're using our resources as, as we need to or as we can. And then communicating, communicating, communicating. I think it was really that the, from a practical standpoint, what was, what was really interesting about the, the nuclear plant was that I think the direct implication for us was, aside from, uh, aside from the extent of any, you know, any actual, you know, radioactive damage that, that would occur, and I think we're more, we, depending on the, uh, the severity of, of the meltdown, so to speak, assuming the meltdown, or assuming a problem was relatively localized, the problem we would be dealing with here in Pittsburgh in that type of emergency would be traffic management.
You have a question or else?
Yeah, and essentially, how, how do we deal with, how do we deal with traffic management? Well, most of it coming, most of it coming from, from east to west, in this case, but some of it coming, obviously, north-south because we're literally at this crossroads. And so, uh, you know, coordinating with our, with our law enforcement, but also, too, bringing in our, our utilities to make sure that we have traffic controls and roadblocks and things like that set up to keep, to keep traffic flowing properly. So I think the part, you know, what participation that we did have was very useful for me in, you know, at least getting this started, and, and it's one of those things where if you have a real good problem, you never have to actually have.
There's a great chart I think here that I think would be useful. That's one that lists all the possible things that could happen and how likely it is and what impact would be. So it does seem like we need to certainly look at the ones that are likely and highly likely, and the ones combined with the ones that have the greatest impact.
Um, I'm not really listening, I change, but, um, it's after, it's after the clear.
Well, every, the, the piece of the regional plan that you see in there is all Chatham County, so everything, every, essentially everything in there, aside from the introduction of that, is very specific to Chatham County, so.
The rare things, but it sounds like for wildfires, floods, um, thunderstorms, tornadoes, hurricanes.
Would, would it help to print out those charts, maybe, in, in full size? I, I think we could probably afford that.
But this is on the web.
That could be a lot easier to check, I think, maybe, actually.
Does it say, "On location on the web" or just on, like, Tonight's Agenda?
Tonight's Agenda.
It's on Tonight's Agenda. I've got, you're talking about a two-hundred-page document?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got it open right now, it's, uh.
Put it on our, on our.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, I wouldn't say to enjoy it, but to have access to it.
I, you know, some of this, I, I'm not just saying, I mean, some of this is kind of interesting reading, so.
Yeah, yeah. I think people like to know what they would do.
Is that a good resolution then for that, that agenda? Okay, then let's move to the next one that was added by amendment, um.
Do you want to adopt this resolution or do you want to just table it for, uh?
I'm comfortable with adopting something, something that's been used for a few years, updated regularly. I feel like our Chatham County Emergency Responder and, uh, and Operations Plan has went through this thoroughly.
Yeah, yeah. I'm comfortable with it. I'm sure they've done that.
Could we add a motion then, Jay?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the Cape Fear Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second. Motion made by Jay Farrell, seconded by Matt Wilson-Foley. Is there further discussion?
There's also a Chatham County Emergency Operations Plan. Okay. The, uh, the second page, you guys, the second page.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolutions to adopt Cape Fear Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan and authorize the town manager's signed state of adoption and approval of Chatham County Emergency Operations Plan.
Second. Senator Taylor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you. Okay. Moving to the next, the addition of posters on phone poles and other, and other stationary objects in Pittsburgh. Um, I have noticed right outside the, um, the Pittsburgh Roadhouse, our recent visit, that every telephone pole in the area is just crammed with everything from advertisements for dog sitters, uh, to plays and musician, uh, musical groups that are playing in the area, theaters and, uh, theater performances and things like that. And although I'm just as enthusiastic as any other play, playgoer or, um, or musical group, the, um, it just looks really awful. Uh, a lot of times the posters are posted over on top of another poster and there are probably a thousand staples in at least similar phone poles, especially the one outside, um, Philomen Music and the one outside of the Roadhouse. Um, well, so it just happened that Fred Royal and I were talking about a different matter, um, and, um, and along came a fellow who was known as the PosterGuy.com, who had his satchel, and he was posting all of these advertisements on phone poles outside the bookseller's office on Hillsborough Street. And Fred has, uh, has captured some pictures of, of the unsightliness of the, of the postings, and, um, so I asked the fellow about it, and he said that Chapel Hill had passed an ordinance by which they had banned the posting of such things on phone poles and other stationary objects except for kiosks that they had developed especially for that particular, um, kind of display. Um, he said frankly, he would love for Pittsburgh to have a place, a unitary place, a board, a kiosk or whatever. I think that would mean that he would have to visit less phone poles around town. And he is paid for this, by the way. Um, uh, people pay him to put these posters up, I know, because, um, he offered Fred a real deal on, uh, on Fred's band, uh, advertisement, and, um, uh, I just didn't know that, that, um, that you have this, uh, musical talent that had been, uh, not revealed to me previously, but, uh, anyway.
I didn't take him up on it.
No. Um, but half price, um, anyway, so I wondered is the, if other members of the board or other members of the staff had seen the unsightly telephone poles or whether that's just me and my grumpy old senior citizen state that, um, uh, and could there be a way that, that we could organize this that would look more attractive in the town, especially given the emphasis that we have lately on making it an attractive downtown area?
I think, maybe I, it's more for the main street, maybe, or whatever, but there was a thought of having a kiosk around town. Um, sorry, I like that idea for, I guess, if you have to spend so much time in Chapel Hill, probably.
And I think, I think maybe a, a bigger kiosk is something that, that we would maybe consider. We do currently have, if you recall, uh, there's a, a board.
Yeah.
That's, uh, I'm, I'm losing the name of the building, it's right next to, uh.
It's the hairdresser, yeah. Next to, and they have.
Not very big, I mean, that's why, that's why I was just mentioning Addison.
It looked almost like it was locked. Is it locked? Or is it?
Yeah, it was locked.
Yeah, I like the idea of having a, a place for, I mean, I kind of enjoy looking at these things, because there's always interesting things, an interesting poster, if it's done in such a way that, you know, it's not however everything. But, I mean, I think, I'd like to see a place that people think, oh, put their posters themselves and not put them behind the lab, but maybe even a couple of us down the street. But it's a way to, I mean, musicians really don't have that many rights to promote themselves, so I'm not opposed to it, and if it can be done, I'd try to, neither than, you know, I'm surprised they would label it, I don't.
But it may not be, I don't know, but his, his approach seemed to be that he would continue to do it until somebody told him stop, and then, um, and then he circled back around at one point and said, well, I've still got this whole actual full thing, should I not put them up? I not put them up? And I said, well, until the board, uh, addresses the issue tonight or at a future meeting, I think you could go ahead and [inaudible].
It'd be a hard thing to enforce on, like, if you could certainly enforce a phone poster.
Okay.
Does the, does the poster man, does he remove the old posters, blink a chance that he just puts them?
I didn't see him removing any, I just saw him putting them up. Fred, did you notice him removing?
I have seen it, too.
What creates a safety hazard for the linemen, too, because they have to climb that pole, their spikes can't get a bite in the wood because all with nails and staples, uh, so it's also just a safety hazard for the utility company employees, if they have to actually climb that pole manually.
Yeah. Any other thoughts? Yeah. Could we look into, um, what Chad will have in that, you know, whether it would...
Mayor, if I may, I've Googled, apparently the town of Wake Forest has an ordinance also, so there's a couple of ordinances out there, we could try to find, not reinvent the wheel, so...
Yeah, so we can support our local musicians and people that don't really, because we don't, it's not like we have a lot of [inaudible] for [inaudible]. I mean, there's nobody, but not everybody knows what you're, so I think it's nice to have some way, more people [inaudible].
Given that we have some ordinances to go by, does the board, uh, would the board like for something to return at the next or the, or one of the following meetings that address the issue in the terms of a kiosk or other, um, public board on which to post those kinds of...
I think it would work on it. That could be [inaudible].
Yeah, I know, just to talk to [inaudible].
Perfect place for a kiosk, could be up there at the, uh, park.
Yeah.
[inaudible].
Yeah, I'm there, and then...
But I do, you know, I'd say these places [inaudible].
Yeah, if we can have one where there's already one there now, that can make it larger and acceptable to people, and I have it behind the [inaudible].
The more, the more challenging part, I think, is enforcing the, uh, is enforcing the restrictions on the telephone poles, seeing how Chapel Hill has had any success with that. I don't know if they have.
Well, it might take a, a bright orange piece of paper that says, post no bills per ordinance of the town of Pittsburgh, um, and I'm sure it would take a while for everybody to get used to it.
Yeah, [inaudible].
Yes, where they can post, yeah.
Well, I think this could be, perhaps a test for the Main Street program could also address, as far as maybe a design perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like individual business.
Oh, oh, I think that's, yeah, that doesn't mean that individual businesses are going to be large for putting things in there, it doesn't, and that happens a lot up in that Main Street, yeah, absolutely.
We'll give a shot.
Like we mentioned, at, uh, April 6th, that, that Main Street.
Yeah, [inaudible]. Thank you, thank you. Um, over the last couple of days, since House Bill number two became law in North Carolina, there's been, uh, just a complete, uh, number of responses to it, some of them by the, um, uh, league of municipalities and some by individual municipalities, Chapel Hill and Carver and others have, uh, made resolutions regarding, uh, the bill. The, the part that I bring to concern of this board is not the part that has made the headlines so much as it is Article Two, which has, uh, attempted, from my reading, to place limitations on municipal government's ability to, um, to deal with wa, matters of wages and working conditions, uh, of its employees. And, um, Mr. Messick, I, I'm sure you, I know you've corresponded with Mr. Fieco about some aspects of, of this, but, um, uh, is it fair to say that there are some profound, um, implications from municipal government in this bill, which has now become law?
Well, it's an example of the general summary's power of a local government in North Carolina, and, uh, we were talking about Article Three, and that's why I, I don't remember what Article Three says about that, so, uh, if there is an issue about that, I'd have to come back and look at that. But certainly as far as, um, employment and public, um, access to public, uh, facilities, the state's vote.
Correct me on this, ma'am. Hold on. Now, this is the new, uh, you said that was Article Three of the bill? Okay. Of the law.
I was thinking it was Article Two that dealt with the wages and...
Three deals with how, I mean, with, um, discrimination employment and in, uh, public accommodations.
I'll read this.
Right.
Mm-hmm, okay. And then there's another that deals with wages, you know, with minimum wages and things like that. Um, so it's pretty broad bill that sort of jerked the rug out of [inaudible]. That's just my opinion.
Well, and certainly I understand, Michael Fieco and I talked about it today, Dillon's Rule, which I believe says we are, we have only what the state gives us, um, but, uh, would you feel that if the board, uh, was interested in drafting a resolution, would you be interested in looking at it or participating as to how it relates to municipal government? Okay. What is the pleasure of the board with respect to that?
My concern is mostly the affection regarding the contract that the state that the municipalities tend to enter into with private contracts does about different things, and that you don't really, of course, you don't have to say in their policy, but you certainly would not want to enter con, into a contract with a contractor that does not pay a minimum wage or uses discriminatory practices. That's the portion that I'm concerned about.
Well, it's not uncommon for the, you know, public contracts to have all sorts of terms and conditions, uh, like, for example, if you have a federally funded project, you've got to pay wages that are established by the Davis Bacon Law, so that may be a higher wage level than is, you know, common in the, in the, in the particular community that it's in. So it's not uncommon to have something like that in a, in a contract, or it's not uncommon to say that they shall not discriminate, apparently based upon just a few things, not necessarily everything. Um, and so, I mean, that type of arrangement is not uncommon, it's just that, I mean, this bill, I mean, this law is restricting the, the local government's right to put things in a contract, expecting its contractors to comply, this sort of thing.
Yeah, that, that's one of my concerns about it.
But, uh, you know, the last word certainly has not been spoken.
Well, from what I understand, laws are issued today by three or four different entities, so, um, I suppose that by the time, well, knowing that the wheels of justice do grind fairly slowly, I was going to say, that maybe a resolution would be moot before we got it done, but, uh, but at any rate, um, how does the board wish to proceed?
I'd be interested to explore a resolution, and, uh, three, uh, local government units around us have come out with this conflict. Carver has done it, they've just got word that Chapel Hill's done it tonight. Orange County has also, um, taken issue and adopted resolutions stating so, so I'd be interested to look at that.
And there is a [inaudible]. And I guess it would fall as to who wanted to work on it. I'd be glad to give it a go, um, working with the League of Municipalities draft and, um, and work with Paul Messick, Brian Gruzbeck, whomever, um, with, for, anybody else from the board wish to come along, or?
Happy to.
Okay. I would be pleased to participate. Pam, Pam would be interested depending upon the, the time. Um, then, shall we, um, do we need to agree to send this forward at this point, or, or is, what's the mechanics of this here?
My mayor, Alice, Alice has the Chapel Hill resolution on her...
I'm actually emailing it, y'all, I could...
It's about, it's one sentence long, so it's talked about...
Yeah, that's one, we missed it.
What did you say?
Thank you. Is that it, in Word doc?
No, that's your, your...
Yeah, I opened it as a Word doc. It's actually like four lines, you know?
Yeah, we're on the...
Yeah, I'll go tell...
If you want to email it to me, I can press.
Okay. If, um, if Percy Crutchfield had sent it to our emails, then...
I'm on the wrong fan, sorry, I thought you talked about the, uh, utility poles. My bad.
Well, I, I don't think this is what we're going to decide tonight, I think this is what we want to just propose to put forward for drafting in the future.
Okay, we do that.
That's what I'm forward, that's interesting, okay. Um, so then, let's move to the third item then. There's been a little emailing going back and forth about an office. I had, um, I had several friends and constituents want to meet with me on a couple of occasions in the office, and I, um, had to tell them that the mayor of Pittsburgh doesn't have an office, and that sort of generated some discussion about, uh, whether or not we should have an office here. When I initially talked to Brian Gruzbeck about it, he indicated that in a previous jurisdiction where he worked, there had been a problem with, um, one of the council members having an office in the town hall and not all of them. So I changed the language, uh, instead of saying, I would like this, I said, I would like this for all of us, for the town council and the mayor. And he indicated that he thought it was appropriate to put it on the, um, agenda for tonight, and then it didn't appear on the agenda for tonight, so I just wanted to sort of bring it out in the open, talking about, um, whether or not we could use an office temporarily, uh, which is just only slightly larger than a coat closet, but it, it would serve to be what, what we might need to meet with constituents. It is certainly true that we could meet, as Michael Fieco has indicated, in restaurants around town or, or things like that. Um, the other night I had a constituent come, uh, with, uh, with tears and Kleenex, um, to the front door of my house and, um, wanting to talk about an issue. And, and that got me thinking about the idea that sometimes constituents might want to have privacy, and they might not want to meet at Verly or, or the Blue Dot Coffee, uh, venue or whatever, um, and so a small office here, um, might be very nice. So when we started talking about it on the board, Pamela Baldwin said, well, you know, this room is empty almost all the time, so, um, Brian Gruzbeck has a, uh, has a meeting, and, um, and this is a, a venue which is available to us, so I just thought I'd open it up and, and see what the board thought about, uh, having either an office and/or, uh, I'm thinking about just doing a set day of, you know, Monday with the mayor, or, you know, something that's catchy like that. Uh, uh, I'm not talking about taking up residence here or, um, or preempting anybody else if the room were needed, uh, but, uh, I just thought I'd throw it out for comments by the board in case we decided we wanted to do something along that line.
I love your concept of Monday with the mayor, because it really is, you could just drop in and have a conversation, I think that's really been created nice connection for, um, [inaudible].
It's kind of like a year.
I don't know, I was using this room myself, I don't see that we have any other space for another office. You know, we've got closets, that people are in closets now, and, uh, I still think we have room for office.
I don't know, is that your room, is that, is that space, you know?
Well, yeah, it's pretty much filled up with, uh, financial stuff now, as I indicated in the, uh, you know, let me back up a little bit. As I indicated in my email, I think Commissioner Bonnet agreed, didn't need to go on the agenda because I don't have a problem with you or anyone else moving into that office. However, I did indicate that there were some challenges with that because of upcoming staffing additions, both with, both in terms of, uh, a deputy director, a [inaudible] period, um, as, as Commissioner, uh, as, as Commissioner Farrell said, um, we have offices, or we have closets right now that are, that are packed with materials that are going to have to actually, we're going to have to knock walls out and shift people around more in order to accommodate additional police offices. This just kind of brings us full circle to the need for an additional or new facility. And, um, and I, as I, as I concluded, uh, as I began and concluded while in my emails, it's, it's doable, but there are challenges to it.
I have a question, but doesn't the, you, my name's Office, that has a conference, Office [inaudible]?
Yeah, it does, it's kind of open space, I don't know if you have, if you have...
Would that be an option?
I mean, you can close this door at the end, you can close this door and meet with anybody, um, in [inaudible], and meet with people in restaurants.
Yeah, I'd like to be...
But you can sit right here, you don't have to sit there and say this.
No, we're not intended to do that.
Yeah.
And this could like be an active, comfortable place, that there's like, you have to delve into the [inaudible]. It could be a place where people will relax.
All right.
I understand that you're really proud of it.
I really am more ambivalent, ambidiscernient, I am really more agreeable to this than I probably sound, you know, I just, we can make this accommodation, but I, I want to make sure that, uh, that we have the ability, if we can break staff on, we have the ability to do that in some time, so, that was my only, that was my only position. And, and, no, it's not necessarily a given that a mayor, I mean, I'll just cut right to it, it's not necessarily a given that a mayor has an office. I don't, I, I'm not, I'm not saying you're not worthy of an office.
Thank you.
Well, honestly, I probably [inaudible].
Well, I think it does sort of point out the growing pains that we're experiencing.
Yeah, I think there's no question that, that it, it might put a, uh, build a little bit of fire under us for, for a new town hall, um...
That would be a good thing.
Okay.
Well, other than this faces, I think Commissioner Bonnet did ask a good question, maybe outlining what, I think he had a question about what is the policy or what's our procedure for this meeting space here, and I think maybe if we spelt that out a little bit, too. If anyone has, but I can say right now, I mean, if anyone has a meeting, uh, you know, if you guys in your travels have a meeting, whether it's a small sort of informal thing or if you want to convene some other group that you've had talking to, call the front desk, Al Cassi or whoever's at the front desk, and, and we actually have a Google calendar that is established, and we can just check that, we can all check that, and, and get, get an idea for assuming that someone's actually reserved it. I mean, I think I'm, I'm probably worse than anyone at going ahead and vulgarizing this room and not necessarily reserving it, so, um, but, but generally speaking, if, if this room is taken up, we can certainly make another accommodation for it, or we can, you know, if you want to do a set day, we can make sure that that room is in a good condition enough for you to use.
Yeah, I don't want you to move the bank boxes out, and...
We might have to do that anyway.
Um, you know, because, to me, that's not unattractive, to me, that's business, um...
But we got, we got the stuff over here, Percy had been talking about, I mean, we've got the stuff in the back here, and we may have to do that anyway, we got, we've got this closet over here that we're probably going to...
I must admit John's email about that, because I don't remember seeing that, but anyway, um, well, if the board doesn't have a problem, um, uh, I'd like to, to, to be here on a set day, so whether I use the little front office or whether I sit back here and crochet most of the times, it's going to take a while before people are pushing the door down, but... of the times, it's going to take a while before people are pushing the door down.
Monday morning with the mayor.
Monday morning with the mayor. You can always get people in for food, right? Okay. Well, I think we've handled that well, so thank you. The manager's update on project is next.
I always say this, but I will try to keep this brief. The sanitary sewer line extension wastewater treatment plan enhancement, we have two RFQs for engineering to go out on that. One would be for the forest main and the second would be for, we did determine actually now that, that the work for enhancing our existing wastewater treatment plant would need to go out for RFQ according to the state. Mayor Perry might remember some of that conversation happening at the state level when we met with them earlier in the month. So we'll be having, we're working on those and probably will be finalizing and advertising those within the next two days, I would imagine. Additional elements, Jeff's not here. He tells me that, as I indicated here, that we still are looking at the end of March, early April, and I've heard this week, early next week, which would fit right in. So we will have more information, more report out, and we will be making that information public as well. Office space again, over at the Chapel Hill facility, that currently houses our utilities and engineering and planning, as well as an assistant to kind of tell all those guys what to do. There's a, they have gone through, John hired, John Potte, married a firm to go through and paint stripes in the parking lot. That was a concern, an agreement, it was spelled out in the agreement, mainly because of the, I mean, not just the appearance, but mainly because of the handicap spaces as well. And so we will be, per agreement, be reimbursed for that in some form, I believe, either right or direct payment, I forget how we landed on that. Finance director, the big news there is, I'm pleased to announce, as I indicated in my email earlier, that we've hired Heather Meacham as a new finance director. Heather joins us from Credit Suisse, I can't pronounce that, that's in RTP. She's worked there for, well, it's global, but her office is located in RTP. She lives, she lives over in Burlington, North Carolina, where she's been made for the drive to RTP. She actually considers this a much easier commute, definitely an easier commute than when she lived in Boston. She's originally from Middlebury, Vermont, and I guess I, the previous finance director was from Anshur, so I decided this one needed to be from Vermont. MBA, MBS in finance and econ. She's had roughly eight years previous banking experience in the past six years with Credit Suisse as financial analyst. Her first name would be April 5th, and we, she's coming in this Wednesday. I don't have a timetable, if anybody wants to meet her on Wednesday, she's more than happy, I think, to stop and chat, wants to get started already. I'll also note that I interviewed, I interviewed two different, two different people for this, both very worthy candidates. Heather was somebody I had interviewed and finished number two when I could interview Nancy. I think what had separated Nancy from Heather was she had that experience in Carver prior to, she had gone from Carbo, Carver then to a nonprofit before she came to talk to Nancy, before she came to the town. Really what separated Nancy and Heather is, would be the municipal experience. I just didn't find that, I didn't find overwhelming amount of municipal experience with the people that I had interviewed, but I think, you know, based on, based on what she brings to the table with the experience as well as her energy and drive, I think she's going to be somebody that's going to, again, service, service as well as Nancy did, as Mandy did Planner two, another position that we're, we're looking to add, we've placed that for advertisement, we're looking to, looking to complete acceptance of applications, resumes up until the worst, and we're looking to interview shortly after that, have somebody ready by May, probably don't get you ground with assisting small area plans, is a thinking attempt. So looking forward to that. And then finally, I look forward to tonight, the agenda for the UEO. I think Mr. Jones had sent out an email earlier, a reminder about the joint UEO meeting with the planning board and the town board of commissioners this Wednesday from six to eight. And you have the agenda before you, I believe Roger's, Roger Walden's quite attending that as well. And then just off script, budget work continues and another reason, another reason why I think Heather wants to get started, you know, even in advance of the notice, wants to start talking about some of the next things that are going to be on her plate. So with that, I will tap out.
And you've included also the financial advisor qualifications at the...
Oh, yes. I wanted to say something about that too, really swift, yeah. There is a memo on that, so I won't belabor that, but you can see the different, the qualifications that identified in there were taken from, partially from conversations that we had at the retreat and staff's travels here internally on what we're working on, but also too from, there were two different RFQs, other communities that I looked at, really in terms of the bonding. We haven't, we haven't had a lot of discussion, you'll notice, qualifications in there that talk about bonding. We haven't had a lot of discussion on that, but I felt like it was important to kind of get some feedback on that, when and if we have to cross that bridge as well. So there is some, I think Mr. Mestick's response was is that, did you ask him to walk on water too? And I don't know that, I said only if the glass is half full, but I don't know that, I don't know that, it's ambitious, it's ambitious request for qualifications. We had three-year period that I'd be looking at. But, but again, I think I did my best to make sure that I was incorporating everything I heard at this point. And then, and then we'll see what type, there's seven different firms that I've started reaching out to, and so we should be able to turn this around really quick.
Sounds like we've got some in-house help along the way.
Well, yeah. She's going to, but there again, I mean, it's a lot like what Fred does. I mean, yeah, you know, Fred, Fred knows, has forgotten more in this, than anyone in this room about, you know, say, water and sewer systems. But we're still needing third-party certification on this stuff, just to make sure that we're exercising as much diligence as possible. And, you know, again, bottom line with the, with the RFQ for the FAA is that, you know, the mission statement on that, so to speak, is that we're doing our best to protect the town financially over the long term. If development does not place us at a long-term financial risk, that's kind of my marching order. So.
And public is different than private, a lot.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Concerns? Jay Harrow?
Yes, you said I might be under a rock or something, but I still was confused about this all, two and three, this resolution that we're discussing. Put it in blue color, being in war, in terms, and clarify, understand it quickly.
You understand what the legislature did, generally?
Yeah.
Charlotte had an ordinance.
Right.
And so they met and sort of overruled the ordinance. And it basically did a couple of different things, but one, it said that the state has a policy statewide that you shall not discriminate based upon race, religion, national origin, and it had said sex, but they amended that to say biological sex, which is something, then they added the definition of biological sex, saying that's whatever's shown on your person. And that sort of followed through with the transgender issues with the bathrooms and so forth in Charlotte and that sort of thing. But basically, the state says you cannot discriminate based on those things there and that's it. Local governments do not have the authority, the power to regulate any kinds of discrimination at all. And the state, that's all there is for the state right now.
So if we pass the resolution, that means we are proving, we're going along with the state, the state is...
Well, it depends on what your resolution says. I mean, what Chapel Hill and Orange County has done is basically saying, you know, they don't like what the legislature did. You know, you could have the difference of opinion based on all sorts of reasons. One, you can't, you might not like the subject matter. One, you don't like the fact that they took away local government's authority to do anything about that. Or you don't like the way they define things. I mean, there's lots of ways that you can be upset one way or the other about that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you with that, and all I've heard about is transgender thing and the biological thing. When it was kept coming up about ladies and all, I get, I hadn't really heard anything from that. All I've heard is transgender and biological.
Unfortunately.
And by all means, I'm, you know, I've definitely got some concerns regarding that.
Right.
Yet partly we'd be a jackass, we're standing on that, but the part we're talking about is...
How can you stay out of Mr. Hall?
Because there's three different articles and I think that it's really unfortunate, but that the bathroom issue, I'll call it that, has gotten us pressed. But what hasn't gotten pressed and which I think we could make a statement about because it involves us, I mean, quite frankly, the bathroom issue doesn't really make it have anything to do with us and our governing ability. But when we are hiring people to make contracts, when we're determining what kind of wages to pay to someone, when we are looking at truly municipal functions here, I think we ought, I think our board needs to be making those decisions.
I agree with that. I understand exactly where you're coming from there. Like I said, all I've been hearing on TV is regarding the transgender thing, and that's definitely not where we need to go.
That's article one, and I don't think we'd be addressing that at all.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
There's a nice email from the league, just kind of to keep them ready, that whole type of explanation, because you're not getting into the whole transgender thing.
And the school government's got a blog that they sent out last week that deals with some of the issue. There's two of, two blogs really. And one is dealing with the purchasing and the contracting kinds of things, and one is dealing with the discrimination in employment and in public accommodations.
And I think a lot of the folks who are taking objection to it have stated that by limiting the categories of people who are protected, and it doesn't include sexual orientation or gender identity or gender expression, that this law allows discrimination of those individuals, of course, to which municipalities have issues. I mean, we passed a resolution here in opposition to amendment one. Right? Because we thought that same-sex individuals should have the rights of others to marry and all the benefits associated with it. So when we talk about this resolution and it having impact on contracting and employment, I think we will have to consider whether or not this board feels as though those other categories of people are worthy of protection or consideration.
And that's more than just a human rights issue, I think becomes a financial issue too. There's a lot of companies that may not come here because if they see us as discriminatory, they might not come here. And that trans, that transitive dollar suits them in many ways.
Well, everybody's entitled to an opinion. Everybody's not entitled to power. And you can have an opinion about all this stuff, you may not have the power to do much about it, except...
Well, and I think we recognize it, that Pittsburgh's resolution, if it's passed, would not be earth-shattering, but it would just be one voice among many, perhaps. Anybody else?
No, that's it.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question. I met a big dinosaur at the, in that story. In fact, is that from, is that part of the town in this, or is this something that the law office is doing?
The owner.
Paul borrowed it from someone, showed up before anything about it.
A friend's connection.
I found a friend's connection.
I'd like to say I was more in control of things.
I was thinking of the place that came to that dinosaur being spotted in town that day, and you would move to the park, and if it really wasn't lying, I just wondered.
I understand there's some problem with the senior partner. Looking out the window and seeing a dinosaur.
I don't know what the hell they're doing. Secretary was upset. Let's vote. Yeah, let's be.
The only thing I have is that people at Powell Place have been willing to...
I don't like it either. It's my opinion.
It's been these big elevated manhole covers that people have sort of had in the grounds that have been...
Can't be turned over.
Do we, I don't know, do we have any idea when Powell Place is, when they're going to finish the punch list on that? You guys, there was some discussion on that going, going on in the last week or two.
They're working on it. We met with them on what they're going to fix and how they're going to fix it, but we don't know their schedule.
There's all the streets right away and the so forth, sidewalks, streets.
Okay, well, we'll find out what those issues are in apartment. Or before, if we can.
I do have one concern. It's a gentleman that lived at 365 East Cornwallis Street in Pittsburgh. He's indicated that the town Pittsburgh picks up garbage on, that only his house is on either side of him, both sides of him, and wants to know why his, is not, why his home is not considered in town, if those other two homes are in town, and if their garbage is being picked up out of town.
I'll find out what you want.
Thank you.
He's saying that...
He doesn't contain? He does not, but the other two does, and he wants to know why those two do, and his doesn't.
Does he say that he's not in town?
He's wondering, are they in town and he's not?
Okay, well, do you have the gentleman's name?
Yes. Mr. Rone, R-O-N-E. 365 East. Is that out of town?
Yes, they don't pay town taxes. One got annexed so they could get some. They started the process and they dropped out when they realized they're going to have to take town tax. Taxes also, in addition to accounting. But it was before him, it was when his sister and her husband, yeah. But theirs is not in town. But then the, a couple of others are.
So the other ones were annexed.
So they could get some.
I have another question I have, someone's been on every night busted garbage cans. What's the process?
You can either, a couple ways to handle it, you can either call, call the town and we'll make sure that Waste Industries delivers you another one, or we can provide direct contact at Waste Industries, whichever is required.
Fred and I talked about this today. A constituent called me today and wanted to know about the transition between East Street, which of course I understand is a US highway technically, or at least in North Carolina jurisdiction, and Beck Street. And there are, there are just a couple little, it's the street that goes directly between East Street and Thompson. And, and there's just a monumental drop from Highway 64, East Street, down, you know, when you go on to Beck Street. And she says you can look down and see the marks on the road where people are bottomed out and their spoilers have hit. And so she would love to see some improvement made. Fred was indicating that maybe during the Salisbury Street paving project, maybe we could hit that too?
John has already obtained an estimate.
Great, wonderful.
Yeah, that was, we'd received that, I think since I've started, we received that complaint. And that's, that's just nothing, you know, previous years, it was nothing really fit the schedule. This time, after hearing it one more time, by golly, don't tell me three times, I guess. Yeah, it's a heck of a drop, and it's a matter of correction, whether it's a matter of grinding down and then calling back in, takes some coordination with the FBI. down and then coming back in, it takes some coordination with DOT and I don't know, Mr. Potteek has had some conversation with DOT, I think with the contractor on how to solve that, so next time we have any significant paving going on, which should be within the next couple of months, the latest for...
Wonderful, thank you. Are we through? Are we adjourned? Someone make a motion?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.